I'd like to call to order the regular meeting agenda on Monday, September 11th, 2017. It's now six o'clock. We are going to have tonight a very special evening. We have our color guard will be led by Eric Webster.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Almighty God, pour out your Holy Spirit on your faithful people. Keep us steadfast in your grace and truth. Protect and deliver us in times of temptation. Defend us against all enemies and grant to our city your saving peace. Be our strength and support amid the wearisome changes of this world and continue to be with those affected by Hurricane Irma. Grant them comfort and safety according to your will. God, as we remember the terror and loss of life inflicted upon our nation on September 11th, 2001, we are also reminded of your abundant grace and peace as we live out your plan, knowing that you are a loving and peaceful God. We pray that you will keep watch over the men and women serving our community, our state, and our nation, and that you will be with them in all that they do. Heavenly Father, keep us close to you. Send your Spirit to make us strong in faith and ready to serve you and your people. Grant us your promised rest and full joys of your salvation. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Stiff, thank you for that very meaningful prayer tonight. And I'd also like to thank the honor guard, the color guard. Can we give them a round of applause? Well, we're all here tonight. I'm so glad to see everybody. We have two items on communications. So I will be reading a proclamation recognizing the Military Order of the Purple Heart. Members of the armed forces who have been wounded or died by an instrument of war in the hands of our nation's enemy. I was sent a request by the Military Order of the Purple Heart to do a proclamation received by Edward McLean, but we can call him Mac tonight. He's the commander of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 691, the junior vice commander, Department of Arizona National Aid to Camp. So if Mac, if you'll come forth, I'll come down and I'll read the proclamation. Good evening. First of all, I'm grateful to you that you did send me a letter asking this. As a military wife of 30 years, and I talk about that all the time, shame on me that we haven't done this before. But what an honor it is that you've come out, I'm the mayor. So for me, it's an extra thrill. So I'm going to read this to you and then we're going to introduce your other aide and then you can have a few words with us if you'd like. So, Purple Heart City, September 11th, 2017, making us that city. Whereas the people of Goodyear, Arizona, have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for the men and women who selfishly serve their country in the armed forces. And whereas the veterans, well, you've paid a high price of freedom by not only leaving their homes and families, but by heroically choosing to place themselves in harm's way for the good of our nation and for our communities. Whereas through the contributions and sacrifice of the veterans, our residents and communities are afforded the ability to maintain the freedoms and the way of life guaranteed to us. And whereas many in our community have been wounded during combat and earned a Purple Heart Medal of Recognition for their meritorious acts and bravery in service, many men and women gave their lives while serving our nation in the armed forces. Whereas it is fitting and is proper to never forget those who have given their lives, that have shed their blood, and for the defense of this great nation. Whereas designation as a Purple Heart City, and I'm pleased, will signify this city's response to call, to recognize, and to honor the brave patriots who bear the Military Order of the Purple Heart. Now therefore be it resolved that I, George Lord, the mayor of the city of Goodyear, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the city of Goodyear as a Purple Heart City, so that we may proudly remember and honor the sacrifices made by our selfless men and women. Given under my hand in these free United States on the 11th day of September, 2017, I and to which I have caused the seal of the city of Goodyear to be affixed and have made this proclamation public. Thank you so much. And feel free to come up here. And don't go anywhere afterwards. Go and take a picture. Okay? Would you like to do that now? Just a minute, I only have a couple hands here.
After the Military Order of the Purple Heart, I present you with this plaque in recognition of the city of Goodyear becoming a Purple Heart City.
Thank you. And I will have this displayed in this city hall for anybody who can see. This is very, very special. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, I want to thank you this evening for our proclamation to become a Purple Heart City. What better day could we pick but September 11th? That's so meaningful to all of us and veterans and for the people that we lost at 9/11 in New York. So this is a fitting day and we appreciate it from the Military Order of the Purple Heart. And we want all the council members, we have proud supportive Purple Heart pins for each one of you that I've given to your assistant mayor. And yes, we do appreciate it and we now have a campaign ongoing to ask all the city mayors to proclaim that their cities be Purple Heart cities. The next city to come online will be Buckeye, followed by Glendale, El Mirage, Peoria, and Phoenix. So that would be everything that we have from the center of the city out west.
Well, thank you. We're so proud that Goodyear was the number one first. We like to see that number one all the time. So that's just great. Thank you.
As a resident, it was my honor.
Do you have any more that you want to add to that?
That's it.
All right. Then what we'd like to do, if council likes to respond, do we have guests come in and make these presentations? So I'm going to turn it over to them and then when you're finished, we're going to ask you to come up here and we're going to take a picture with you and the council. All right? So who wants to start? Okay. Down at the end. Did I get you off? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Bill did it to me. He put his finger down there, so.
You got cheated the last time.
We're breaking you in.
No, thank you. Yeah, thank you for choosing us as one of your first cities to have this honor. So we, as a military community, and we appreciate it. We appreciate the, to be your number, the first city, and we appreciate it. So thank you for your service and thank you for these as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Orton.
Thank you both for your service and everyone else that came with you and your families. What you did, your service to our country and those in our military are the reasons that I can go home and sleep well tonight. So I don't really know what else to say except for we are indebted to you, your service and what you did, like all the military personnel and their families as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Osborn.
It's an honor to have you here. And, you know, I think we, especially fitting on today's date of September 11th. And so I thank you for bringing this to the city and mayor for making that proclamation. That's wonderful. You know, we'll be forever in the gratitude of our armed forces and I'm just very thankful and humbled to have you here. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
I too am a wife of a retired military member and I appreciate every military serviceman who has, and woman, who has been awarded the Purple Heart. We're very honored to be a Purple Heart City and I look forward to us having that on our website and to publicize that, to become aware of how important our Purple Heart veterans are. And you're right, today is a very special day because of the plane flying into the Pentagon and we lost many of our service members that fateful day as well as our first responders. So thank you so much for asking us to be a part of your program. We appreciate it and thank you very much for your service and for your family's sacrifice as well.
Councilwoman Zillo.
You know, when you get down to this end, I'd just like to say plus for everything that's been said so far and again, my own personal thanks for all that you do for this country. Thank you.
Councilman Stiff.
You know, I've spent two of the last three weeks training soldiers, both at Fort Hood and out in Maryland this past week. To see these young men and women as they get ready to embark on whatever mission they're called upon is an exciting time, you know, for me as a trainer. But to look back at the service that you have provided and if they hold you up as any guide for their service to their country, we will have no doubt about our ability to sustain going forward. So thank you for your service and for being here today.
And I think this will be a legacy for our city. There's so many very important stories to tell about the past conflicts and wars. And I think that's going to give us, open the door to us to maybe share some of that with our public and it's very important. So now is picture time. So if you don't mind coming up here, we're all, I guess we can go all down the front now, right? Or is it in the corner better? Corner's better, I think. Yeah. Okay. We appreciate the patience of the audience. We find communication section very important. We learn a lot. We honor people and we spend a little bit of time on it and we're so pleased by it tonight. All right, the next communication item is from Lisa Atkins, the president of the Central Arizona Conservation District, just a moment, I gotta pull this up, I can't see, Board of Directors, and will provide an update on the central project. And Lauren, all right? So you go ahead.
I'm ready.
All right, thanks.
Mayor, thank you very much. What a wonderful pleasure to be here and watch Goodyear become the first city. You know, military issues are very dear to my heart.
I know they are.
So I'm just absolutely pleased to be here this evening. Mayor and members of the council, as the mayor said, my name is Lisa Atkins. I am one of 15 members of the Board of the Central Arizona Water Conservation District. We commonly refer to it as the Central Arizona Project. And I happen to be serving as the president. This is my second term, but I am like every other member of the board, my 14 colleagues. We are elected in nonpartisan races across three counties. The CAP serves Miracopa, Pima, and Penalt Counties and is governed by a board of 15 because it's a special taxing district. So this evening, I appreciate the opportunity to go over, I knew I was going to do this correctly, to just review some of the components of the Central Arizona Project. Water is always a big topic in the West, particularly when we've been through several years of drought and when we live, more importantly, when we live in the middle of a desert. As I said, the Central Arizona Project serves three counties in Arizona, which represents 80% of the entire state's population, Miracopa, Penalt, and Pima Counties. We move the water from the Colorado River to all of our customers along the canal by way of gravity and 14 pumping plants. And the electricity used to run the CAP comes from, today, comes from the Navajo Generating Station, but may not for much longer. As you know, we've been doing some work, the Navajo Generating Station may change owners fairly soon. A few years ago, my colleagues and I visited with all of our cities and towns in Miracopa, Penalt, and Pima County and we talked about Navajo Generating Station at the time I met with you all here. And we talked about people not understanding, having no reason to know how heavy water is. If you have to lug a gallon of water, you know, but if you talk about it within the entire distance that we have to go, all the water that we move, the Central Arizona Project is in fact the largest consumer of power in the state of Arizona. Moving that water from Lake Powell to Lake Mead down the system and across the canals is very expensive. We use Lake Pleasant north of Phoenix to store water during low water use seasons for distribution during the hot summer months. And the lake rises and falls anywhere with a 50-foot difference during the year. The canal was federally authorized in 1986, but was actually the dream. If you go back and look at the state's history, you trace how our Ho'opon' Indians followed water in the state, the concept of how agriculture followed water wherever we went. That was the genesis of the Central Arizona Project, is how we moved where the water was and not being able to move whole populations like that. The canal idea of moving water off the Colorado River came to be. Took 20 years to construct the Central Arizona Project and our being constructed as the last Bureau of Reclamation project and major Bureau of Reclamation project in the country took with it some trade-offs. And in order to get the project authorized, Arizona had to agree that we would be the junior user. I was there for many of the years toward the end as we got the project authorized and appropriated and it was a heavy lift every year to convince our colleagues that while we had the right to that water, building a reclamation project of that size and scope was not something that one took lightly. Anytime you talk about an asset or a resource in the state of Arizona, you always want to know how it ties to the economy. So that had never been done until about five years ago and we went to ASU and asked if they would help us quantify the economic impact of the Colorado River water supply in central and southern Arizona. And these are the numbers that are now dated a few years, but show you at that snapshot in 2013 and 2014, that we generate approximately $100 billion a year in economic benefit to the state, which is about a third of the Arizona gross state product and how many jobs it fuels a year, and that's 1.6 million jobs. The Colorado River, from its beginning to its end, is divided into the Upper Basin and the Lower Basin. Seven states and Mexico share the Colorado River. Water is divided between the upper and lower and about 40% of the water used in Arizona comes from the Colorado River. It's a system, a river system, and that's important to remember because it's not just a free-flowing river. There are rules that govern how water flows from one point to the other, how the dams are operated, and we learned some of those lessons, not necessarily in a drought time, but if you'll remember back to the floods of 83, when we had a very, 93, when we had a very late spring wet in the Upper Basin and all that water came down the system. We had not topped off Lake Powell yet. The dam was built, Glen Canyon dam was built. Lake Powell had never been topped off. It had finally reached its point where it was topped off when we got this late spring runoff. I watched, I spent that summer traveling up and down the Colorado River on Congressman Stump's behalf and watched water come through the system like you wouldn't believe. Spillways at Glen Canyon, spillways at Hoover, at Parker, because we had not thought about what happened when you top off Lake Powell, when you top off Lake Mead, what you do with the water that's coming down the system. So it's a river that has taught us a lot of lessons in the history, not just of Arizona, but in the history of the Upper and Lower Basin states. We have two of the largest lakes in the country and actually, we have two of the largest lakes in the entire system, and that's Lake Powell and Lake Mead. And the operation of those two reservoirs that you see is critically important and the elevation I will talk about at the end because I want you to hopefully favorably consider joining our team, Team Lake Mead. Shortage is not just a drought situation. We have successfully been able to manage the Colorado, particularly the lower part of the Colorado, by leaving water in Lake Mead very aggressively. CAP has done some of its own work in fallowing land in Yuma at the request of one of the irrigation and drainage districts. We knew that we were heading toward drought. We have been in drought for a long time. 17 years is a long time. It also allowed us to discover that we have a structural deficit. So it was incumbent upon CAP to do everything it could to make sure that the secretary did not have an opportunity to declare drought because one of the trade-offs that we made when we had an allocation, when we won the court case and had an allocation of the river was that Arizona would be the junior user, not the entire state, but CAP itself would be a junior user, which means that we would take first cuts and our customers would be impacted. Every August, we use information, we use information that is part of what the secretary uses to determine whether or not there will be a shortage on the Colorado River. I'm pleased to let you know, and I'm sure you've seen in the news, that we got great news in August. Even with declining elevations in Lake Mead, there will not be a shortage declared by the Secretary of the Interior in January. What does the Lower Basin allocation mean? The primary, these numbers are important, not just as a point of information, but also to underscore the importance of what we do to leave water in Lake Mead and the importance of the structural deficit. In good times, we didn't notice that there was a structural deficit. The water was there. We took not only our water, California was taking some of our water. Arizona's been quite ingenious over the years to follow in the history of our state. When we see a problem, we think about how we're going to deal with it. The Arizona Water Bank is a classic example of the state being aggressive about California taking water that was our allocation. We had no beneficial use for it and the Water Bank was born. And so now we take every drop of water to which the state is entitled. The primary reason for the structural deficit is in fact that we're taking more water out of the reservoir than is flowing in during normal times. Abnormal times like the excessive runoff that we had would mask that. Now that we're in normal times, normal drought times, we know that we have a structural deficit. When the states originally divvied up the supply, the upper and the lower basin states, and came to an agreement in the compact, they didn't allow for evaporation. It wasn't part of the vernacular at the time and they certainly didn't think about system losses, which is what one gets if you're California and you don't line your ditches. You get system losses, which is why we're so focused on lining our ditches in Arizona so that we can avoid those. The deficit is significant and it draws down the water elevation of Lake Mead by about 12 feet a year, which is a large amount of water. And that's even in just a normal year. This year was a better water year than normal, so the release was higher, but even with the higher release, the drop would be approximately four feet if not for other actions that we took aggressively to leave water at Lake Mead. And this is a very good explanation of what normal releases look like and talking about the structural deficit. Let me go to the next slide where we talk about the Lower Basin structural deficit. If we get normal releases from Lake Powell of a little more than eight million acre feet, Mead will continue to fall by 12 feet or more a year. Our concern has been steadfast that Lake Mead will continue to decline, notwithstanding past efforts, because of that structural deficit. Absent intervening action by the basin states, only equalization releases from Powell will stem the decline in Lake Mead. Getting all the basin states to agree to equalization would be challenging at best. This is our situation to deal with as a junior water user. Of this particular allocation, I always try and remind people that because the CAP allocation is identified as a junior user, we have higher, there are higher priority water rights on the Colorado River besides CAP. And a lot of those are found in Yuma. The Yuma Act rights are more senior than ours. So what's the impact of the structural deficit? No lower basin state is exceeding its importment. So if we did go into the shortage because of junior priority, this is what it would look like. We don't have any way to make up for evaporation and some system losses. We would end up having to bear the obligations of others. It's not a situation that we want to find ourselves in. If you can be proactive by doing what we do to leave water in the lake, it will help us dramatically. One of the things that we've been working with, a lot of folks in Arizona, in particular the Department of Water Resources, both last year and the year before, Tom Bishatsky, who's the director of DWR, and I hosted what we referred to as a drought contingency plan. What do we do if this situation keeps going south as far as Arizona's Central Arizona Project allocation? We negotiated what you see on the screen about a year and a half ago, and it's a step toward protecting Lake Mead from reaching catastrophe. toward protecting Lake Mead from reaching catastrophically low levels. You may be aware that when we talk about the catastrophic low levels, Southern Nevada Water Authority went and put another pump into the bottom of the lake to make sure their allocation is even smaller than ours, to make sure that they could take every bit of water that they could out of the river, or out of the lake. So we've done everything we can to make sure that we keep the lake at 1025 so that we don't have shortage. Now, here is where my heart is in the West Valley. You are a part of the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District. The CAGRD is a part, by statutory obligation, from the Arizona Legislature in 1993. It was created to provide an alternate mechanism for landowners and water providers to comply with the requirements of the Assured Water Supply Program in Arizona, which is critical to our ability to move forward. I look at it a slightly different way, a slightly different explanation. For those of our communities like yours that were not around when contracts were written for CAP water, this is what fills that gap. This is what adds that layer of value for all of the private property that we have in the West Valley, is the ability for our communities to be members of the CAGRD, and it's of critical importance to me. It's one of the reasons why I was delighted to be appointed to the board and continue to run because of the importance of the GRD to the West Valley. Right now, the GRD has 23 member water providers in cities, and virtually every home constructed since 2001 in Avondale, El Mirage, Goodyear, and Surprise has relied on membership in the GRD. When you think about how much we have grown just since 2001, that's a critical point of information. What's the GRD's relationship to CAP? Well, I told you that in the last century, that the Legislature housed the GRD at CAP. It's a department within the Central Arizona Project. It serves the same three counties that the project serves, Maricopa, Pinal, and Pima County, and the GRD members are a subset of the CAP constituents. You'll notice on here that GRD members pay the CAP 10 cent and 4 cent property taxes and all costs of the GRD memberships. What's the role in Arizona water management? Arizona requires all new development in the major metropolitan areas to have 100-year assured water supply. Entities that lack access to renewable water supplies but have reliable access to groundwater have the opportunity to join GRD. It does not allow the mining of groundwater. It allows groundwater to be consistent with the AMA management goal by replenishing the aquifer after pumping occurs, and GRD members pay GRD to replenish the groundwater that they use. So those were all very thoughtful constructs when the GRD was created. Memberships include, like I said, water users that don't have a CAP subcontract, contracts that are insufficient to meet growing needs, and contractors that don't have direct access to CAP water. And there are two types of members, member service areas, which is what you are, and member lands, which are subdivisions and master plan developments. The GRD allows for economic development in the West Valley. Goodyear is one of four West Valley GRD members, member service areas, and you all have enrolled since 2001. All new subdivisions built in Goodyear because they rely on the city's GRD membership. CAGRD has replenished about 9,400 acre feet of water on behalf of Goodyear. Due to Goodyear's management of its own water resources, no replenishment has been needed since 2013. The GRD does not protect a need to replenish on behalf of Goodyear until at least 2038, which is wonderful water management on your part. And over the next 20 years...
Just a minute. I'm sorry. We're going to clap on that one, okay? Maybe we can go on.
And over the next 20 years, Goodyear is projected to account for about 44% of all new housing development within the four West Valley member service areas. So I think that your leadership on water has been very instructive as far as your future economic development goes, and is also instructive to your colleagues in the West Valley. Membership activity, the majority of GRD membership activity occurs in the West Valley. Now you know why this is so close to my heart. In 2015, the West Valley accounted for 79% of new member land enrollment in the Phoenix area, and in 2015, the West Valley accounted for 79% of all new GRD-based homes ready to be sold in the Phoenix area, and that was as we were coming out of a recession. This is a brief summary of the Goodyear picture. You've got an M&amp;I allocation of 10,742 feet without direct access to the CAP. Your 17,742 acre feet includes a lease of water from the Gila River. So all of the CAP water that Goodyear orders is delivered to the Hieroglyphic Mountains Recharge Project, and it's stored underground. This year, Goodyear has ordered a total of 8,744 acre feet of water, and so that with your GRIC lease and a little more than 1,700 acre feet of water of your allocation is what your order looks like this year. We appreciate the fact that you recently signed an agreement with SRP to deliver your CAP allocation to the city. We appreciate that because water in Arizona is always innovative, and you found an innovative way to have that delivery made by working with SRP. They're going to build a treatment plant, we understand, and you're moving forward on the plans so that you're going to be able to take all of your CAP water in the near future, and we appreciate the diligence with which you pursued that. The agreement is also notable because it's the first time that SRP is going to be allowing water to be delivered to an off-project city. It shows what we do in Arizona when we need to collaborate and partner to get things done, and I'm so proud that Goodyear was the first community to do that. So that's the end of my comments. This is my paid political board announcement, and that is leaving every drop of water in Lake Mead is critical to making sure that in the future, with a structural deficit and not knowing what the next chapter of the drought's going to be, that we leave water in Lake Mead. We have put together a campaign called Protect Lake Mead. The website address and the Twitter handle and all of those good social media things are on the sheet. If you have not signed up to be a member of Protect Lake Mead, I would encourage you to do it. It is an asset, not just for your city, but it's an asset for the entire valley, and this being a project that serves 80% of the state's population, it's in our best interest to grow that team to protect Lake Mead as large as possible. Mayor, thank you for your hospitality tonight, and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
Well, there'll be questions. We appreciate your presentation. Certainly, you are the water lady. Your history and your positions in the government and all your activities in Arizona certainly has placed you in a place of honor, and so we appreciate you coming tonight. But our council probably has a lot of questions, so I'm going to, let's see, we started here the last time, so I'll start down to the right. Councilman Stip?
Lisa, obviously, thank you very much for being here tonight. As the former AMWAR representative, this was a good review, but it was also some good new information about where we're at. Always appreciate the partnerships that we can establish throughout the state, and we are very proud of the work that we've done with SRP and getting creative, and I think that all really goes to the staff. Thanks for your kudos.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Pizzillo?
I had much more to add to that. Again, I appreciate the information. I'm somewhat familiar. I was also on AMWAR, I guess, before Councilmember Stip was, and I get a lot from my son, so I appreciate the information. Thank you.
One of the 475 employees at CAP, of whom we are very, very proud and could not have an operation that we do without the talent in that group of people.
Well, I appreciate that. I'll pass that on to...
They do all the hard work. Yeah. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you very much for the update, Lisa. We appreciate you coming forward. It's always fun to see you, and it's even more interesting to hear whatever you want to share with us, and we know how important water is, and our city is so active in conservation and educating the public and telling everyone how important it is that we save every drop we can. So thank you so much.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. As the current AMWAR board member, I truly appreciate your presentation. You know, just the history of it all and kind of the background lesson that you gave us is very, very good, and I appreciate it. And you certainly, it's an honor to have you here because you are the water lady, and I do appreciate that. Well, and you know what?
I appreciate that.
You're also the land lady too, weren't you?
You know, yeah. I am.
No, and so I'm very appreciative. I think that you hit so many great aspects because it's not just the CAP of what you deal with, and you know, I think that's truly important, and I know that, you know, it's interesting times for our state right now with water, and I appreciate your leadership. And you know, I think that, you know, the best outcomes are for Arizona that has water policy and water rights that are solid and a foundation that has lasted us for the thousands of years that it has to the future, and I'll be very excited the day that we can get our full 17,000 acre feet through the SRP straight to us, and so I thank you, Lisa.
I think that is, having grown up in the West Valley and watched the West Valley grow as dynamically as it has, one of the things that I think is important is that there's a strong foundation of folks who can see the future, understand where we are today, know where we were in the past, and can make very prudent plans for how we're going to grow. This community is a shining example of that. Your leadership in coming to that agreement with SRP to figure out a way how to use that CAP allocation is exactly what we need to be doing. So it makes me proud to be able to stand up, and I will firmly admit that I have a bias toward the West Valley, but it's where I'm most familiar, watching everything grow and watching the stewardship of all of our communities in the West Valley has just been so exciting for me, because we're seeing the growth happen, and it's happening in a very measured, productive way, and it couldn't happen without mayors and councilmen like you who have been very thoughtful about what the future's going to look like and how we're going to get there.
Councilwoman Loretano?
Lisa, I want to thank you as well. I remember, you know, when all the news crews were there and the first water came down, and it was on all, you know, the TVs, everything, because it was such a big deal. And we have so many people that have moved to Goodyear in the last 17 years or just to the West Valley in Arizona that don't really know pre-drought times. So I think it's important, and we have a water committee that's coming up with more ideas and more information on how to conserve and get that message to our citizens, because it's really important that our citizens keep preserving it, because I think that is really important, that we do need to protect Lake Mead. You don't see it every day, and people don't always understand, that haven't been out here that long, where the water comes from and how it is tied into that system, and it's coming from up north. So I think that's really important, that we do protect it, and we get that message out to our citizens how the water flows, and I think we're doing that with the SRP stuff that's kind of helping our citizens know, so thank you for your work.
We want to partner with you whenever we can to help get that message out.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hampton?
Yeah. That's what I say, yeah. Thank you so much for coming and presenting and learn a lot more about the water, and it's one of the things that I think a lot of residents take for granted because we're doing a good job and worked a lot of hard work behind the scenes where they turn their faucet on, they don't realize all the work that put into coming up to that, turning the faucet on and having that reliability of having that water there, not having to have drought precautions put in place like California has. So I appreciate your work, and it's the future of our city. I mean, that's how we're going to grow, and that's how we're going to try to keep having the basic infrastructure in place to be able to keep growing, so thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for this continuation of this project, so thank you.
And lastly, we'll make sure everybody has www.protractlakemead.com, okay?
Thank you.
And so I'll be checking all their iPhones and making sure that that's on.
We welcome you to Team Protect Lake Mead. Next year, by the way, Councilmember Loretano, you talked about milestones. Next year is the 50th anniversary of the authorization of CAP, and we're going to celebrate.
Great. Well, I'd like you a round of applause because that was a great presentation.
Thank you for your hospitality.
All right, now we're going to, it's time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council, and I do have a speaker card before I call. We will listen to your comments, take one of the following responses, respond to criticism, request the staff investigation, report on the matter, or request the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. Of course, the speaker, I think, probably coming up knows, but just three minutes, the yellow light and the buzzer will let you know we have 30 seconds left to speak. Before you begin to speak, identify yourself clearly by stating for the record your name and address, and I'd like to welcome Maxine Hill.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Maxine Hill, 1606 West Fillmore, Goodyear, of course. I'm here because I am a member of the Awarfria Governing Board. I'm also a citizen, and I would like to ask the mayor and the council, and I need to acknowledge your new councilman, Hammond.
Right here.
He's a graduate of Awarfria, so I'm watching you, councilman.
All right.
What I'd like to do is I'm here to ask the council to assist. We have a major problem. We've had no accidents yet, but as you know, desert edge and bases are right next door to each other, and it is a nightmare. Right now, we have parents traveling, challenging buses. I understand the bases are going to be a high school. We then go into students driving, so I am requesting the council's assistance and the mayor's assistance in any way, and I will have my superintendent work because we've got to solve the problem before the high school go up. There's a major traffic problem over there, and it's imperative that we somehow sit down to the table and find out what we're going to do, because we've had no accidents, but it's waiting to happen. And so I am requesting that the mayor and the council, whoever's in charge, let us get together and let's solve the problem before the buildings and the roads go in. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, and definitely, we will request the staff to investigate this, okay, and report on the matter and inform council on us. Thank you so much for your presentation. All right, we're going to go to the consent agenda with the city clerk. City clerk, please read consent agenda, item 6.1 through 6.3 by title only, please.
6.1, approved draft minutes from a regular meeting held on August 21st, 2017, and a regular meeting held on August 28th, 2017. 6.2, adopt resolution number 17-1824, accepting a grant award from the Gila River Indian Community for $113,520 for the Goodyear Fire Department for integrated thermal imaging cameras, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents related to the grant award, and authorizing a budget transfer to allow for the expenditure of the grant. 6.3, accept the dedication by special warranty deed and deed of partial release and partial reconvenance for a portion of Estrella Park Loop.
Thank you very much. Does anyone further public wish to remove an item from this consent agenda? Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from this consent agenda? And could I please have a motion?
So...
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Osborne, a second by Councilman Stip. Roll call, vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Let's go to the business item. The first one, seven, remind council to please refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete, but the 7.1 on the business is an ordinance clarifying the determination of the majority of vote in election. Darcy McCracken, our new city clerk, is it just the city clerk? All right, thank you. I'll cross that out. Will be presenting. Darcy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request for council to consider adopting ordinance number 17-13...
Darcy, can you just move that microphone just a little bit more? Yeah, thank you.
This is a request for council to consider adopting ordinance number 17-1367 to amend the Goodyear City Code. Chapter 2, Article 2-3, Section 231 would be amended by adding the following clarifying language: "For the purposes of this section, votes cast shall mean illegal..." For the purposes of this section, votes cast shall mean a legal vote actually cast in that candidate's race for a legally eligible candidate, and excludes ballots and other votes that were not actually cast in that race, including overvotes and undervotes. Staff presented information to council on August 21st, providing background and recommending the change. It is staff's continued recommendation to clarify the determination of majority vote and adopt the clarifying ordinance. If adopted, the ordinance will become effective in 30 days and will be in place for our next election cycle in 2019. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
All right. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then could you, so can, you're up there, so you've got it, okay. Would you please read the ordinance number 17-1367 by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number 17-1367, amending the Goodyear City Code by amending Chapter 2, Article 2-3, Section 231, primary election, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Vice Mayor. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo.
Just a question on the calculation, I just want to make sure I understand it in my head here. Mayor and council race, 7,000 ballots are received. 100 ballots, no council position selected, none, just mayor, all right? 100 ballots were invalidated because they voted for more than three people, okay? 100 ballots were non-valid because they wrote in some name down at the bottom that they wanted. Would we tally it by taking 7,000 minus the 300 I just gave you, which would be 6,700, divided by two, plus one, would get you those votes for the council seat? Is that an accurate way to describe it?
It's partially correct. We're only going to count the votes for candidates, and so that means that if there were undervotes, but there are still things on that race, we're going to count the ones that were for that race but didn't go over. And I didn't write down all the numbers, so it gets a little fuzzy, because I didn't write everything down as you were saying it. But then, once we get to that number of just votes for candidates, then we're going to, and not for the mayor, but for the candidates for council, we would then divide it by the number of seats available or up for election, and then that would be divided by two.
So let me, let me ask you that, because I think what I just described was the simplest way to count, but, and that's because what it did is it started with the total ballots that were turned in and subtracted the ones that were not valid, and then you divide that by two and add one. I want to make sure I understand this correctly. So if you have one vote for one council versus three, then that would only count for one, then when it was totaled up, you'd still divide the three spots by three to try to get that 50% plus one? That's where I think it gets a little murky for me. Does somebody else want to?
I have to turn it over to-
I don't know, I think you got Darcy confused right now, that one.
I think, I think what we're trying to do, though, is, it's not a hard calculation, because what we have to do first is, we have to then count each of the seats that are being elected as, not its own race, but as its own seat. And in order to come up with 50% plus one, or the majority, then you have to divide by the seats first, because otherwise, if you did have all those people actually vote for multiple races, then you would actually come up with a larger number than what actually voted in the race.
So if there's 7,000, let me make sure, 7,000 ballots, times three would be 21,000 seats, right? Potential votes.
I'm the attorney, don't ask me math questions. But I think when you look at the, look at the proposed ordinance, you're not really changing the calculation of votes, you're changing how many votes go into the bucket before you start your calculation. So the math is still done the same, it's just how many votes are you, are you putting in that initial bucket of votes, if that makes any sense.
So those 300 votes that I gave the examples of, somebody writing in, that would be out of the ballot.
And the previously, they may or may not have been included.
You either vote what's on the ballot.
To me, my example was really pretty simple, but, I just want to, I just want to make sure we're not making something more complicated than it has to be.
And the intent is to simplify, you know, a vote marked is a vote cast, not the vote that wasn't cast being included as an undervote into your calculations.
Okay.
That's gone.
Vice Mayor?
I've just had a quick question. Why do we do 50 plus one? Why can't it not be just a majority vote of those voting? Who comes up with the 50 plus one? Is that a state statute?
I believe that's in the charter. I think, yeah, I think that it's actually part of the charter, but how, that's how you have to come up with majority, because if you just did 50%, that would just be half. You'd actually have to come up with a little bit more than half, so it's 50% plus one in order to come up with more than half.
Okay. Are you sure this is going to make it simpler?
Absolutely.
Because if it isn't, I don't want to vote for it.
For as long as I'm here, it will make it simpler.
Okay. All right, Darcy.
So you better keep it. Okay. We won't, we won't hold you to it.
Can we put Darcy in the charter, then?
It's in our charter.
Councilwoman Loretano?
Well, it all started simpler until Joe started giving the math.
Fine, till the, yeah.
Till the accountant, the finance.
Till the accountant started talking.
Okay, my question, just to compare, this might make it simpler in my mind, I think I'm still on the, how we're doing this, but is this how the, for our legislative districts where we have like two, like for, is this the same way they count, or how do they count?
Mayor and Councilmember Loretano, this wouldn't apply to those races?
No, I know it wouldn't apply, I'm just wondering, is that the same, are we talking the same, is it comparable, like, like in LD 13 where they have two representatives running, and then you can vote for up to two? Is this going to be the same type of math that they're using?
Not necessarily, because they actually have a party race for their primary, and then at the, so their next one, the general, it's not, yeah, it's whoever has the most. Does that make sense? Because they're just giving one person. Yeah. Yeah.
So this will be reflected then correctly at the recorder's office, so when you pull it up, it won't show the incorrect winner now, once we fix this?
Yeah, well, let me clarify that.
Hopefully.
Because we do, sorry, because we do contract with the county, and we use their equipment. Their equipment should show the same, but I can't say absolutely 100% all the time it will, because I don't know how their equipment's going to work. They are in the process of changing some of that equipment out.
But I'm sure at one point you'll have the information when they, they correct it. We had the same thing last year and the year before.
Absolutely, mayor.
Information came so late, and so, but, yeah. And so we'll get the information, council, yes, Councilman Stip.
So I wanted to start with, if a train leaves a station at, no. Very simply, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for getting the job done. Yeah, thank you to Darcy, thank you to Ror, thanks to everybody. This has been an issue for us for years, and I'm glad it's straightened out.
All right, I think we're ready to vote. So roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Darcy, thank you very much. All right, 7.2 on business is to contract with Dillon Flight Tests, Inc. for fire and emergency medical services. Tom Cole, deputy fire chief, will present. Tom?
Evening, mayor and council. The action before you is a recommendation from staff to approve a contract agreement with a local defense contractor that approached us several months ago with a request for a do, will respond letter or agreement to their facility. It is in proximity to the 187 station in Mobile. What you see before you is the result of that negotiation. It's a contract that states that we will respond from 187 at their request based on need. The address is not published in the agreement. The address is registered in the CAD system, and that's basically based on the nature of the operation that Flying Bucket, Dillon Arrow, Dillon Flight Test undertake at this facility. It's about 5.35 miles from our facility to theirs. It's as the crow flies. It's a bit farther than that, frankly, almost double that by road. It is accessible from our facility, and with the vehicle that we can offer service from, we do believe it's a fair and reasonable request on their part. It has been requested basically as a zoning issue for them. They're in Maricopa County, they are outside the city limits of Goodyear. Information before you fairly well explains the staff analysis. Call volume's not an issue for 187 at this point. They are going to offset our personnel costs to the tune of four calls. We have not responded to that facility in our history, reported history that we have analysis of, and we are provided, able to provide some limited structural firefighting capabilities and the advanced life support service that we provide to the Mobile South Goodyear area. You've been provided a map that shows proximity of the facility to our station, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have beyond that.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards? Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then can I have a motion, a second, to approve the contract agreement between Dillon Flight Tests, Inc. and the Goodyear Fire Department for fire and emergency medical services for an area located due to the south of Fire Station 187? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Council Stip and a second from, who is it, Councilman Pizzillo? Great. Now open for council discussion. I'll start to the left this time, so, Council Hampton.
How far is it out of city limits from?
Mayor, Councilmember Hampton, if you look at how, I don't want to give away too much of the location, sir, but it's approximately, I would say, about two miles outside the city limits.
Okay.
Any other question?
That's pretty much all the questions I had.
Councilwoman Loretano?
And whether we do those calls a year, we would get paid that lump sum amount regardless, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Loretano, that's the correct answer.
And if we didn't do the agreement, then if there was a call there, we are the closest station anyway, right?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, works for me, thanks.
Councilman Osborne?
No further questions.
No question. Councilman Stip?
These agreements are pretty standard for outlying areas. I understand there's some of the fire districts that are up north, out west, that have these types of agreements with major entities, that they provide that, is that correct? So this isn't a, we're not blazing a new trail here.
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Stip, that's affirmative. This is not an uncommon agreement for facilities that happen to lie outside of traditional first due areas for responders.
And there is a provision in the contract that if the call volume exceeds four, that there's a revisit or an additional charge, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The provision would allow for us to come back to the table at the end of one year and renegotiate the four-call fee.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Pizzillo?
I'm fine.
Council, Vice Mayor?
I'm troubled with it because they're outside of the city limits of Goodyear. How long have they been in business?
Ma'am, I have a, mayor, council, or Vice Mayor, I apologize, I don't have the, that's the statistical evidence or data on Dillon Flight. I know they've been down there some years. We also have an employee that's had a separate, part-time work relationship with them for a number of years. So I know they're a company in good standing, they're an Arizona company, and they've been a defense contractor with the, with the US government for some time. I can get that information for you.
It's just, we've been down there for years, and this is the first I've heard of it, that's why I'm just stunned. When I read it over the weekend, I was very surprised about it, because that's okay.
Okay, well, I like a local company, Arizona company, it sounds good to me. So, and I appreciate, this has been a very difficult situation, and we've been continuing with it for a long time, and so I'm happy to see we've come to some conclusion and some service in that area, so. All right, council, then let's vote on this. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Nay.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Vote carries six.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. 7.3 on business is consider, consider authorizing staff to finalize the award of the contract for the executive search firm services for the manager recruitment. Lyman Locken, human resources director, to present. Lyman?
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm bringing forward a proposed action to authorize staff to finalize the award of a contract for the executive search firm to lead the city manager recruitment. At the August 21st council meeting, council appointed a subcommittee to review five proposals that were received from interested search firms. The subcommittee was made up of Mayor Lord, Councilmember Osborne, and Councilmember Stip. After a thorough review of five proposals that were received, council is recommending moving forward with a contract with CPS. The following selection criteria was included in that decision. The firm's experience in recruiting, the firm's experience recruiting in cities our size or larger, the process the firm would employ to create the candidate profile, the description of how the firm would maintain communication during the recruiting process, the process and assistance provided to evaluate final candidates, and the firm's overall size and reputation. With the recommendation of CPS, the subcommittee requested that the following stipulations be included in the contract. One, CPS conduct the search that allows us to make a job offer by early to mid-December Also CPS was to ensure that council remains informed throughout the process by progress, about progress on the search, and at a minimum, we requested certain milestones be included. Those milestones were the completion of the candidate profile and the recruiting strategy, update on progress on or near the midpoint of the recruiting advertising campaign, preliminary screening status and results, and status of completion of the candidate reference and background checks. Also, status of the job offer acceptance. So these milestones were also included in the request, requested stipulations. As part of the proposed action this evening regarding the stipulations to make the job offer by mid-December, you've all been provided with a draft schedule from CPS, and that draft schedule does not meet that stipulation. So that's one of the things that council is going to have to contemplate tonight if you approve us to move forward with the, with the contract. The reason it doesn't meet that timeframe is largely due to the holiday timeframe and the fact that we're going to be starting a month after their 16-week progress. They did provide this schedule in an attempt to meet council's desire to make a job offer as early as possible. It should also be noted that the schedule has been drafted to try and meet that stipulation, but also CPS is willing to look at the schedule, and they're going to, they plan on meeting with council on the 25th. So the next part of the process would be CPS, if the contract is approved, coming out on the 25th. And during that visit on the 25th, they would be meeting with each individual council member to begin the process of developing the candidate profile. They would consolidate all that information, meet with council as a group to talk about the profile and everything that they've gleaned from each individual council member, and that would also be a time that you could work through the schedule. Again, this is a draft schedule that you've been presented with, so council will be able to guide that schedule based on your availability. One of the things that I did want to emphasize, looking at the schedule that we have outlined, is the holidays will be a tough time period, both for candidates- is the holidays will be a tough time period, both for candidates and potentially for council members. One of the dates that is included on there would be interviews the week before Christmas. And I would just make a point that it may deter certain candidates from participating in the process, so just a consideration for council. With that, I will stop here and allow council to, first, if you could, provide direction on the stipulation, whether you want it to continue to move forward with the stipulation for a job offer in December.
All right. So, I have to ask Roarick, can we vote for the contract without that stipulation and then talk about the stipulation and change that?
Just make your motion at this point, then open it for discussion and give direction on that.
Great, all right. Could I please have a motion and a second to authorize staff to finalize the award of a contract for the executive search firm services to CPS to assist the council with recruitment process for a new city manager? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton and a second from Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion. Councilman Osborne?
Well, I completely understand the timeframe, and you know, while we would like to have this filled, you know, before the end of the year, reality, you know, I don't want to rush through something because we know the holidays will, can truly affect something. So, I mean, that's just, that's a reality, I think, and so I understand that issue.
Councilman Laura Tano?
And I would have to agree, I think just putting it the week before Christmas, you know, not just for our schedules, because I know I'm going to be gone several of those days that week, but for possible candidates. They may have plans, they may have family that they've already planned to go out with, and that's just probably the worst week because it is literally the week before Christmas and the holidays.
Christmas week.
You might as well make it Christmas week between New Year's. I mean, that's just, I think we need to tweak that a little bit to start the New Year's, and we'll have to figure out how we're going to work that out.
Okay. Any other comments here? All right, down to this end. Councilman Stiff?
You know, the timeline that we have before us is, you know, fairly reasonable, and if they're willing to try to find efficiencies in it and speed it up throughout the process, I think we can do that. So the, I don't think I need to make a motion. So I think, I think we're okay, and then, you know, they're working with us, we're going to try to find places to slice a few days here, slice a week there, maybe we can get this closer. Because no matter what we do, no matter when we make the offer, more, most of those candidates will want a gift 30 days. So, we're looking at a February start.
So you're saying leave it in there, is that what you're saying?
No, no.
Take it out, okay, all right.
I'm saying take it out, we're okay with this, and then if we can get them to move on it a little bit, you know, and again, that's just the average candidate, you know, some will have less or none, and some will have.
Councilman Pizzillo?
It looks reasonable to me, the timeline I have. My only concern is, I'm hoping they can maybe squeeze up a little bit as far as the interview, because I can picture, if you're going to do interviews on the 18th of December, people have plans, they may already be out of town, spending them with family, et cetera, and I'd hate to see a limitation because of that particular date, either after the Christmas holiday or before. I don't have a problem with that, even if it slides, only because there's people traveling, and there may be some people on this diocese that are traveling at that point in time. So, I mean, Christmas is seven days away. So, I mean, that, I'm hoping that you could find some time to squeeze that up a little bit, but, you know, having interviews on the 18th, I think is, is going to be a challenge in itself. But it looks reasonable to me, so that stipulation that you have in there, I don't have a problem, you know, us taking that out. And if we have to address the part as far as that extends the contract, well, we've got plenty of time to figure out as a council how we address that issue. So I don't have a problem with this timeline. My biggest concern is the 18th doesn't sit real well with me. I'd like to see it a little earlier or after the 25th, only because I think you're going to limit some of the people that may want to talk to us because of that date, just a thought.
Vice Mayor?
Can you tell me, Lyman, how long you plan to advertise for this position?
Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Campbell, currently, within the schedule that's outlined, it would be about 30 days, just short of 30 days, I think 29 days is where they're at. I would also say that the meeting that would take place on the 25th, the consultant will be prepared to sit down and work this schedule out, including the length of advertising, if there's any concerns there, as well as sitting down with council and talking about the interview process itself, in terms of the number of days and the components of that interview process, to include whether or not you want any kind of community involvement and the type of involvement you want from internal leadership. So, walking through that whole process and ensuring that we have enough time to run the kind of process that you want.
Okay, and they'll be on-site to meet with each individual council member so that they can get a feel for what we're looking for?
Yes, Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Campbell, that is correct. They'll meet individually. Based upon your availability, we'll start scheduling those. If you approve the contract tonight, we'll start scheduling tomorrow those interviews for the 25th. And if someone's not available to meet face-to-face, we'll schedule a phone interview with them.
Yes, are you done?
No, I have another question, I'm sorry, I was just clarifying. I couldn't print out anything you sent me, and I apologize, because I like to have the paper in front of me. I agree with Councilmember Stiff and Councilmember Pizzillo. I would like to see if there is a possibility, and we can share this with the consultant, that they might be able to cut off a week or a couple of days so that we can move forward, because if we go to the very end of the timeframe that you have laid out for us, and then we give them, and we interview the 18th, and it would be the, and we gave an offer on the 18th, just hypothetical, it would be the 18th of January before they could even start, which might even be the 1st of February. So, we're just anxious to move forward, and we do realize there's holidays, and we have to work around that, but that's, this is a great job for somebody, so hopefully they'll be beating down our door.
Well, I will say, what was I thinking as part of that group on this date? Because it's very difficult to get council set on appointments to bring in individually. And if I've looked back on the year, everybody has a different schedule and obligations, and it's been very, very difficult. So, I'm, I say that we have to be more pliable in that sense than what we had put in the original one. So, I'm going to ask Councilman Stiff if you will make a motion and to change this.
I do have a question.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
And I don't think a motion is necessary, if I cut the head knot from Roarick earlier. I would not personally be in favor of pushing this interview process beyond Christmas. I want it done before we get to that point, because we can drag this thing out forever. And I don't think that's what we want to do. And I know the committee, when we talked about it, our intent was that we have it, we're prepared, the theory was, we're prepared to make a job offer in early December, so this individual can take the time necessary so that they can be here in mid-January. Now, obviously, if that's the slide from us, that we're not making the offer until early January, then we're not hiring, we're not bringing a new person on until early February. If we push the interviews until after Christmas, we are not going to see this individual until almost March, and I don't think that's anything that we want. So, I think when we have a discussion about timelines, we hopefully are collectively thinking, we want this sooner rather than later. So I-
We've got nodding heads here on that, for sure. So, how do we solve this as far as-
Yeah, I don't want to cut anybody off, but-
Yeah, making the motion.
But I think we can do it. Now, do we need a motion to amend that stipulation that we put in? Madam Mayor, Members of the Council? No, your action item is just to approve the contract, so I think you can have that conversation-
You could have told me that about-
You can have that conversation with the consultants when they come in on the 25th and lay out your timeline, so.
Okay.
Tonight, you're just approving the contract award.
Okay, all right, so we're, well, at least you have the opinions of the council about the timeline, you know, when you're preparing for this, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, okay. Everybody, all discussion, okay, this is going to be a roll call vote? Do I do a roll, I'm going to do a roll call vote, so it's all in favor, I want a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell? Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. All right, so now we're down to the end, aren't we? Now, the time at the city manager, the deputy city manager, has any reports to give to us?
I just have the announcements on the pancake event that took place, and if you'd like, I could go ahead and provide that. And also, we will be doing a follow-up on the concern on the traffic around Desert Edge and Bases, so I did write that down.
Okay, good. Anything else? All right, so council, have any inquiries for future council meetings? All right, let's talk about, oh, Councilman Pizzillo?
Just, just real quick, I didn't want to miss that, we were there at the 9/11 celebration today at-
I was going to ask you for that.
Odyssey Prep, they put on an excellent presentation. Been there last three or four years, and the kids put on a great show, so I know-
They called it Reflection.
Reflection, so.
It was Reflection Event.
Really enjoyed the event, and again, every year, it's always top-notch, so. I just want to make sure we got that in.
I just have to add to that, it's just amazing, these young people were chosen, certain ones, to come up and give a talk. They did such a great job with it, there's such unity there, and the, such great behavior, and the fire was there, and other people was, it was really a step-up event for a school. I have to tell you, I was very impressed by the students and all of the staff. It was, it was very good. I'm sorry that some of you missed it because it was a good one. Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Osborne?
I have a few, so I apologize. Yes, that is a good event. I actually missed this one the first time in quite a few years, and so I was, I was sorry to miss that. Just so everybody knows, the reading, the Goodyear Reading Challenge began, and exciting news today, we found out that Elevate Trampoline is going to be the, they're going to give 90 tickets to the three-winning junior, well, junior high classes, the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, so that's pretty cool. I appreciate our businesses that step up like that. The, I was going to say something about Anwar, but, you know, you all received the information, background, what's going on, so I think you understand that. I appreciated staff, first of all, Michelle, taking me on an economic development tour around our city, that was a very good update, I appreciate that. Sometimes, you know, we do so many things, and it takes a couple of years sometimes before they're, they're up and running, and so it was good to see that again. I also attended First Things First and the Read On Literacy annual event, and I have to give a huge shout-out to Rob and to many staff members that quickly jumped up to supply me information for my fly-in for the National League of Cities, my Fair Committee, the Finance Administration, and Intergovernmental Relations. We had a fly-in to go see senators and congressmen, and this was very timely because many of the things that we were going there to discuss had to do with tax reform. And it was what they call SALT, which is state and local tax deductions we were fighting for, infrastructure for our cities, CDBGs and municipal bonds, and also, of course, the never-ending pounding on the drum of the marketplace fairness, but-
I'm sure you've made it known.
Yeah, of course. It was interesting to, you know, we, we as a city and all cities around, most cities, you know, are nonpartisan, and the teams that went in for this went in a nonpartisan manner, and I truly appreciate that. And it's unfortunate when I, when you see leadership that, quite frankly, blatantly show it in their walls of their offices, of how they're against whatever party, and that was really unfortunate. And, and I have to give a shout-out to our own Congressman Trent Franks, because he didn't. He had a very American office, and I just thought that was, that was refreshing. And lastly, one of the congressmen that we did see was from Colorado, and it was, it was great to have Ms. Atkins here, because, because I had to say to him, "In Arizona, we love you, and in Colorado, we thank you, and we appreciate everything that you do as the water flows from your state on down."
You've got to keep that network going.
Yes, we were, just trying to keep the relationships alive. So, that was, that was a very good thing to say, thanks.
Any other? Vice Mayor?
Well, earlier this week, the mayor and I took a tour of Cavco, which is the company that builds the mobile homes, although I'm not, I guess I can call them mobile homes.
And tiny homes.
And tiny homes, and the one, the beautiful cabin homes that you see all around in our beautiful forest. And it was very interesting to see how they make everything from the ground up, and they do a beautiful product. And after we went to visit them, we went over to McLean, Sunset McLean, and that is the food distribution company here in Goodyear. And it is amazing to see the amount of products that they ship out every day and that they take in every day. And they're just a wonderful community partner. They give the products that they don't need to St. Mary's Food Bank, which we appreciate, and they sponsor a lot of fundraising activities for Phoenix Children's Hospital, and they're just wonderful community partners. So we certainly thank them for their hospitality as, as well as Cavco, and it was just really a wonderful morning.
Thank you.
Hot, but wonderful.
Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I got a, get a tour of Sub-Zero this last week, that was pretty interesting too, to see from beginning to end how they refrigerate and different products, so that was, that was pretty interesting. And then, yeah, I went to the 9/11 breakfast, a lot of everybody, a lot of people here as well, that was great to see. And then, I said a question about, have we had, this is a side thing, but the, have we had any resolution with the buildings down off in old Goodyear, those city buildings? I know there was a RFI, RFP going out, and I don't know how long that was for.
Councilmember Hampton, the RFI is out, they were doing tours today for those interested in the buildings and gathering more information, so it's still in process.
Okay, I thought today was a milestone, okay.
Well, I'm the last, and I re-attended, some of the council was in there, for the 2017 56 Fighter Wing Air Force Ball. And this year, we sponsored a table. And it was a great event, they had quite a long program, but an interesting program, one of where General Jones, who was the general that started the Luke Forward, that started the campaign for us to bring the F-35. So he was the guest speaker, and of course, General Howard always talks well, he's very good, they're also very good, aren't they? They've really been to charm schools, I say, they really can know how to present it. And then they showed all the flags of the United States in the costume of the time, and it was, it was really delightful. But we now have a, I hate to say trophy, but we have a big-
Shadow box.
Shadow box display, and in there is, there was a flag that was flown in an F-16 and an F-35, and so it's a beautiful display, and talked to Darcy today, and I think that we ought to put it in this, in the city hall, in the lobby coming in. I think would be nice, but really nail that baby down, because I don't, I don't want someone carrying it out, because it is wonderful. So, it was great, and I think we all said, "Oh, my gosh, there's hundreds of young people." Yeah, everybody was, it's amazing, it's amazing what they do. But I have to tell you, every time that we spoke to someone, and every speaker that got up, and it just was unity. They believe in what they're doing, it's a wonderful, wonderful feeling when you get into a room full of military, because they are dedicated to the United States of America and to you, the citizens, and that always comes through in the social part of it and in the speeches. So, it was just a great event, and so I'm so glad that we were able to sponsor a table this year. So, with that-
So, with that, I think we're all done, but I just want to make sure nobody said anything about a future agenda item. You got one, go.
I just have a couple updates...
Please do.
For mayor and council, one is the 9/11 memorial and pancake breakfast held this Saturday. We had about 250 people who attended the event, feature joint partnership with police and fire honor guards, speakers from police and fire department, as well as Master Chief John Morton, where they had a surprise visit from Long Beach Fire Department, Swiftwater Rescue Task Force 12, who stopped by the event on their way back from providing assistance in Texas, so that was a nice surprise. The event had police and fire equipment displays and K-9 demonstrations, a band, Anderson Institute of Music, local vendors, and they were able to provide free pancake and egg breakfast to everyone who attended. We'd be, it's really important to recognize and give thanks to those vendors who provided that food and service for the event, Wigwam Rest Resort, Hickman Farms, CTCA, Village Inn, Starbucks, Sugar and Spice, and McLean's. But rest assured, there was no food that went to waste, anything extra was cooked up and donated to the New Life Center. So, we had that update, and then I did receive a last-minute update, there was mention of tours of different areas, economic development tours and all of that. Michelle and her group, welcome to any requests for any tours like that or anything, if you'd like a economic development tour or a tour of a specific business, please let them know, and they're happy to provide that for anyone interested. With that, that's all I have.
Thank you for mentioning the 9/11 event, we were there, it was great, and it was, what a breakfast, I mean, it wasn't just pancakes, it had everything there, and we enjoyed it, and the people around us, I think, the citizens enjoyed, and the children really do, but you know, when you see them carry that flag out, and then you see that flag lifted, and it is huge, again, that's that other feeling that you get, God bless America, so thank you for the service, it was just really great, so. Okay, nothing else by council, so I'm going to go on to tell you, the next meeting will be September 18th, we'll have a work session at 5 o'clock, we'll have a special meeting following that, and so I'm looking forward to seeing you all that time, this meeting is adjourned.